Yeah. They just gonna enter a minimum amount of understanding with the group. They're not holding any, you know, they just need some.
I am.
We're gonna come out pretty good. Because I would say.
If they stay.
If they stay. And I expect them to stay.
Well, hopefully, yeah.
They're good people.
I hope so.
So that's one week, if it's a bit.
That'd be good.
What is that? What is that?
The VT, VT two.
Oh, yeah. Hey.
No, no, that's on, that doesn't happen tonight.
Okay, I apologize. For whatever I need to apologize. But don't tell me, go on, say it. Okay. I said nothing last night. Okay, I love you. All right, we got an understatement. Okay, good.
Here you go.
Okay.
We got a good crowd tonight.
Everyone in place? Legal notice was given of this regular meeting of the mayor and board of all the persons for this Thursday, October 11th, 2018, at 6:00 PM in the courtroom at City Hall. This is our call to order. We are going to ask that everyone stand for a moment of silence. Let's remember all of the hurricane victims in Florida, Georgia, and the Carolinas. And I'm gonna ask Councilman Robert Shaw to lead us in with our invocation, and Mayor Protem Moore to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Let's have a moment of silence.
Our most gracious having followed, we thank you for this opportunity tonight to come together as a council and as a group of citizens, Lord, to work hard to improve our city and to carry it forward.
Yes, Lord.
Lord, we just thank you for each one here today tonight. We pray that each of us will work together to love our city and to make things happen for the better of our city. Lord, again, thank you for this opportunity that you've given us, and we give you all the honor and praise for what we did in Christ's name.
Amen.
Salute. Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have a quorum?
Yes, sir.
This meeting is now in session. Do we have any announcements this evening? I would like to thank Chief Campbell and our police crew that went down and picked up our three police cruisers today. I'm sure we've got the enterprise publishers and editors. But that you'll be getting more information about those. We were pleased to add those to our fleet. We definitely needed them, and it's a blessing. Any other announcements? Okay, public comments as they relate to items on the agenda. Do we have anyone from the public that would like to come to the microphone and speak to any item on the agenda?
It's not on the agenda, but I still want to bring up about the city raise for the city employees. It's not on the agenda, but I'm gonna bring it up as much as I need to.
Okay, that's, that's well noted. And Mr. Prater, I'm glad that you have that spirit, and I'm hoping that, I know the council have, have expressed that. We have some very serious litigation that you are aware of, that we don't know the some certainty of, and at this time, it would not be wise for us to entertain any, any talks about that except the fact that we all want to see that. Every single member of this council, and including myself, we want to see it. But as you know, we, we're faced with litigation from the dates all the way back to 2005. And in that context, we can't, we know that it's not possible that we can do that even though we all want to. Item five, approval of the previous minutes, the regular minutes of the September 13th, 2018, and special meeting of September 26th, 2018. What's your pleasure?
Mayor, I move we.
Okay, it's been moved by Mayor Protem Moore, second by Councilman Shaw, that we approve those minutes. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The previous minutes are approved. Item six, Finance Committee Report, Resolution 18-1802, Bills and Claims for the month of September 2018. Chair of the Finance Committee, Locke.
Mayor, I move that we, we got a resolution 18, 18 on two bills and claims for the month of September 2018.
It's been moved by Councilman Locke.
Second.
Second by Councilman Shaw, that we approve these, this resolution, adopt this resolution. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Item seven, recognition of City of Bastrop summer sports package. I'm sorry, participants. You know, every year, the, the City of Bastrop has a long history dating all the way back to Mayor Johnny Bond, through Mayor Hawkins, through Mayor Olive, through Mayor Jones. Mayor Jones was a Parks and Recreation major and graduate from Southern University. And we want to thank, forever think, Mayor Bond for really beefing up the Parks and Recations Department here at the City of Bastrop. We had one of the most diverse programs of any city in Louisiana. And we've got our Parks and Recations Director, Mr. DeVall, along with others. And Mr. DeVall, if you all can come up, and I'm just going to turn over the recognition. We wanted to recognize all of our participants of summer programs because we appreciate volunteers. There are many, our program is, is packed with volunteers. And I sometimes leave City Hall and their meeting, we have to leave the south entrance open for them and their meeting, and they're not, a lot of them are not getting paid for it, from different leagues, Dixie Youth League, or other leagues that we're gonna recognize. And then the city has track, is that correct?
That's right.
And every year, our track, this didn't start with me, it started a long time before I got here. But we want to formally recognize those participants because they, the volunteers, the coaches, the teams, the parents, guardians, do put in a lot to represent Bastrop. And I'll say this and I'll shut up. The, I was down at the Sterling complex watching the, the baseball, Dotson All-Stars. And they beat Sterlington that night, and I really jumped up and down at that new sports complex down there, you know, yay, yay Bastrop. Mr. DeVall.
Thank you, Mayor. We want to thank the mayor and the city councilmen for accepting us today. We think this is a great deal that you asked us to come and recognize these coaches and children of our summer league program. Our summer league program consists of softball, baseball, and our city track team. And they all had a great year this year, and I'm just proud to, to be able to stand here and tell you all, I'm proud of everyone, Dixie and Dawson Little League, as well as our city track team. And at this moment right now, I'd like to thank Ms. Evelyn Lenoir and Ms. Margaret Cotton, part of the Parks and Recreation staff, who helped us to, helped me to do better, to keep me in line. And what we want to do, we don't want to hold you because we know it's business. And I think it's great that you want to recognize our summer program, I want to let you know that, Mayor. So what we want to do now, we want to ask the city track team to come up first, the city of Bastrop, if we got anybody from the city of Bastrop track team, coaches. We'd like to ask you all to come up. And I want to let you all know, they, we started off with thirty-some kids, and these kids worked hard. They went all the way to what part of North Carolina? I mean, South Carolina, North. North Carolina. And I want to get Coach Odom here, Coach Williams here? Coach Williams here? This is Coach Odom, basketball coach at the high school, and help us with our city track out here. Coach Odom, you know these kids, come on up here and, uh. Come up, you come on up and introduce them, and, uh, we just think you called his name out and everything. And we'll pass it out to them, before you get to see them, I guess. Need to make, Coach?
Yeah, I guess I could. I do enough talking, I'll do it. I guess, but Adrian Williams. Coach, Coach Williams not here right now.
Coach Williams.
Coach White's not here. Cash didn't, Henry.
Give her a hand. Tell me what, tell me what she, what she participated in.
She participated, she made it all the way to Nationals in a long jump. She did a, did a very good job. She's one of our track runners that's been running with us for quite some time, and she's a really good athlete, student athlete. Congratulations. Trey Odom. He's, uh, he made it to Nationals in the, in the hurdles, eighty-meter hurdles for his first year. He made it all the way to Nationals, and, uh, he did a great job. Jaqués Tippett. Don't let your size fool you. He's real athletic. He made it all the way to Nationals, and he's a, a great, great, great kid. He learned real fast, and he made it in the speed walk, believe it or not. It's a very difficult event because you have to keep that form. You break that form, you get disqualified, so he did a great job. Ms. Dizmuk not here today, but she's a stellar athlete. Uh, she may be, right now, she may be at basketball practice, right now. Uh, she made it in the shot put. She placed nationally eighth in the nation, in the shot put. She did a tremendous job. She represented Bastrop well, she, she put us on the map. Okay. Mazai Davis.
All right.
She made it to Nationals. In the, in the speed walk. Hey, right here, this is the challenge, right here. She gonna question me on everything. Why we do it like this? You gotta do it like that, do it like this. She did a great job. Oh, that's good. Kaya Jones. Kaya made it to Nationals in the, in the race walk as well. She did a great job. Mariah Hurd. Hey, this, this one of my favorites, she's my project. So you gonna hear about her in the future. First time she worked with me with the hurdles, she did a tremendous job. She's very athletic, she caught on very quickly. It was amazing. She came in first day, I showed her the form, she caught, she came in first place, first race. So we looking for big things out of her. Congratulations. And Coach Adrian Williams, she did a tremendous job helping us with all our field events. Olivia, Olivia Benista, here we go. Hey, great, she's real shy, she gonna give you all she got. Don't let the statue fool you. Congratulations. I'm not gonna get this name right ever. But she showed up, she, she does the shot put for us, and she does a tremendous job. Hey, first year with us, she caught on very fast, and she was training other kids, and she learned, she was, she was able to teach others. So that's what we do, peer teaching, they do a great job of peer teaching, teaching one, one another how to, how to advance in the sports. So we looking forward to having her again this summer. Thank you. Hurley. My man, she here? James Carter. This is real James Carter. Hey, this is a tremendous athlete, he's been an outstanding athlete throughout, even high school level, along with track and field at the high school. He continues to work hard, he comes and works with us through the summer. If anybody ever played high school sports, we work, we train, we train, we train. So a lot of kids, they just don't continue to work, they say, I'm gonna take a break. Not this guy right here. James has made it to Nationals, I think, three years in a row. He does a tremendous job in the shot put, the discus, and coaching. If you didn't know it, this is our other coach right here. So he does a tremendous job working with the young people. I'm proud of James, he has a bright future, and he never says no. You ask him to do anything, he gonna always be on time, and he gonna make sure we on time. James, congratulations, you keep doing great things. He did a great job, he made it to Nationals. Appreciate you, boy. Kareel. Hey, this young man right here, we could put him on anything, and he gonna try, he gonna get out there and do it. Long jump, come do it. Four hundred, he gonna do it. He never asks why, he just go do it. Knows the type of athletes that you look forward to coaching. He don't ask why, he just go run it. And I say, well, you gotta pace yourself, he going full speed. That's the type of athlete that sooner or later, he gonna get in shape, and he gonna be able to do some great, some great things for us. Congratulations. Hey, we really, once again, I want to thank Parks and Recreation Director, Councilman, for giving us this opportunity to come out and display, and I really enjoy working with the kids. I do it all the time, I work, coach, come out, I just enjoy doing it. So if you guys continue to support us, we'll go out and represent you all well. Thanks again.
We want to thank Coach Odom, Coach Williams not here, and City Track Team, that's, that's our track team, that, that's the city of Bastrop. Track team right there, I want you all to know that, they represent the city of Bastrop. All right?
Ambassador.
I want you all to know that there. And there's one more I'd like to, to mention, Coach Odom, what is Bobby's last name? Bobby Williams. Bobby Williams won the, what was it?
Yes, sir.
Come on, you know more.
He was the one in the newspaper, right?
He was the one, he got the Ace in Monroe. Bobby is a wonderful kid, you know a little bit more than me. He didn't run for us, but he was out there every day, and he didn't let his condition stop him, and he, he made it, Bobby made it. His name is Bobby Williams, I want you all to recognize. If you go over by the technology building, you'll see a kid on the parking lot just about every day, running. Go by there, he by there every day, on that parking lot. And he's a good kid, so I wish we had a guy in contact with him and got something for him, cause KNOE, we still can't recognize him, and the city of Bastrop need to recognize Bobby Williams. Let's give him a hand. Softball. Yeah, the softball, is, uh, coaches? That's what your president right there.
What we have is recognition for our coaches, for their participation, and all of them volunteer their time and effort, and mostly life, to help out with the girls' softball team, as far as Dixie Youth is concerned. So what I have is a recognition and certificates. Oh, yeah, calm down, DeeDee. The first one's for Coach. You should. Sonya Thomas, for RK and all Y and K Swedish team.
She's not here.
Okay. The second one is for Coach Leah Adams, for Dollar.
Shore Cattle Co. name.
And the next one is for Kelsey Dear, Christmas Realty Swedish team. Coach Chad Womack, Brownstone Swedish team. A lot of them didn't get an opportunity to make plans to get because we were notified at such short times, so we'll make sure they get them done. The next one is Casey Afaro. Wilson Owens. Coach Rachel Jones, she's out of town. Coach Victoria Gibson. Not here. Delaney Mayo. Coach Arthur Mumu Madison. Coach Delaney Mayo again. This is for the DA's Angels team. Jalisa Livingston for Falls Angels team. Coach Rusty Travis. It's for Jones and Jones Ponytail. Coach Stevens Sistrunk, Shelter Insurance Ponytail. Not present. Coach Holden Irby for Johnny's Ponytail. Not present. Coach Christopher Rollup for Bingo Gold Bells. Coach Chad Coats, Cheerleading Bells. Coach. Farico Jimmerson, First Franklin. That's Coach Rico, ain't it? And Coach Luen Gray for Jones and Jones Bells. All right. And we'd like to thank you all for your appreciation, and we really enjoy.
No, we're gonna, I'd like to say that those, ladies, the girls' softball team all made state, and we had one to win, and.
The Darwin, I mean, the Swedes and the Angels both were undefeated district champs and placed third in state.
So all right, let's give them a hand.
Thank you all so much for coming.
We're gonna move on now to the baseball, is the Dixie, Dixie League coaches here and players? I know I see one so far. DeeDee, you the only one? Yeah, DeeDee Green. Tell me about your, about your ball, about your team, man. We got to get back to that shit. And, uh, no, the Dawson Little League, I got Dawson Little League, we don't want to leave Dawson Little League in it. Well, the Dawson Little League coach standing, come forward. Come on up, Bobo. Baseball. Baseball, let's go, Bobo.
Just saying, he babysitting y'all, he got the, the football.
I'd like, I'd like to speak on the Dawson Little League, that's, that's, that's my team, and these are my coaches. We went down and came in second in district, we lost out to Sterling, as the mayor said. We beat them to get where we need to be, but we, we didn't finish it. But they played a, they played a wonderful, our kids played good in Dawson. And the last time we was represented, the first time was when Ruben Reynolds and Tiger DeVall, all them was eleven and twelve, we lost out in state. Then we had a girls' team, lost out in state in eleven and twelve, then Denzel and his group lost out. Now, this group we have now is another eleven and twelve, and if you notice, all of them eleven and twelve, cause that's all we have. And every now and then, we'll find, find that rocket, what you call that, uh, that diamond in the rock? So we found a good in this year, and I want to thank the mayor for coming down and watching us play, and they playing hard. And we trying to get Dawson back on the map. I need help buying banners, to recognize them people out there, these kids out in, in Dawson Park. So, Coach Bobo, Coach Kenton, we have a certificate for you, and we want to let you all know that all the programs in this summer league have done a, we have done a great, they have done great. And I just want to thank the mayor again, and you councilmen, for taking time out and allowing us to come into your place. Thank you all, on behalf of the summer program. And one more thing, if, as Ms. Lenoir reminded me again, we wouldn't be nothing without sponsors. We want to thank all the sponsors for what they do for all the kids, because if it weren't for them, City of Bastrop don't have no money, do it, Mayor?
No, sir.
So we want to thank the sponsors for what they do to help us to continue, you know, move forward. Thank you all.
Thank you, thank you. Congratulations, Councilman Green. I know you do, and we appreciate you, the city wouldn't be the same without your leadership. Yes, sir, it's on tape, it's on video, you can always refer back to it, Councilman Green, because I mean it from the bottom of my heart. Item eight, appointed member of the Bastrop zoning board of adjustments, Ms. Evelyn Harris, is she here? Yes, ma'am. Can you stand, Mrs. Harris? Ms. Harris is always willing to serve, and she's a great individual, and I would like to, we had a member that left the zoning board, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And we, this is a non-paying position, it's a position that we need someone faithful to execute the, the duties of the zoning board. I would like the council to approve this appointment.
Can I make that motion, Mayor?
I second it, Mayor.
Motion made by Mayor Protem Moore, seconded by Councilman, District D Councilman, Derry DeeDee Green. Thank you, Councilman. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you for accepting the appointment, Ms. Harris. We appreciate your service. You're always there when we call. Item number nine, Ordinance 18-4250, an ordinance authorizing a borrowing by the City of Bastrop, State of Louisiana, the city, of $1,500,000 by the issuance of its revenue anticipation note, Series 8, 2018, providing for the payment thereof, providing with respect to the rate of interest thereon, providing for a pledge and dedication of taxes and other revenues of said city for, for security and payment thereof, in principal and interest and other matters in connection therewith. Mr. Josh Leonard, hi, Josh, how are you?
Good evening, Mayor, doing well, Councilman? I'm Josh Leonard with Bull Shaffto and Leonard, also have Mr. Steven Nasaka with Trinity Capital Resources. And what we have here tonight is a revenue anticipation note. This is a cash flow borrowing that the city has done every year for about the past ten or twelve years. And the reason for this, the majority of the city's income is from property taxes. Those don't begin coming in until late December, and then January and February. And so whenever we get to around mid-October through November, there can be a cash flow shortage. And unlike if there's a cash flow shortage in a business or a personal situation, for the city to borrow money, they have to go through the bond commission. And unlike if there's a cash flow shortage in a business or a personal situation, for the city to borrow money, they have to go through the bond commission. So, you have to get out in front of it. And that's what we've done here, this is, we go out, we borrow the money, it sits in an account. Whenever the taxes come in in December, late December, January, February, it's paid back, it is paid off by March thirtieth next year by statute. And we went out and got bids, Regent's was the lowest bid at three point one three percent. And it's not exceeding one point five million, what we'll do, there's a formula we use, but essentially it's, we take the general fund balance and then we look at the cash flow deficits from last year and then that determines how much we can borrow this year. Cause it's only to make sure there isn't a shortage of funds, basically, is what you don't want to have happen. And so, it's not to exceed one point five million, if we close the deal today, it'd be about one point one million. And it may go up, it may go down, not much. And again, it was our Regent's low bid at three point one three percent and we are recommending accepting that bid. But it's up to you and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, gentlemen?
I'd like to ask you a question.
Sir, can I ask you a question?
Certainly.
We always said property taxes don't, is there anything else the city could do to raise revenue or something for its military or something like that? Is everything complete in city taxes?
The answer is yes, if you can get the voters to vote for it.
Okay, that's what I thought.
And whether there, that's something we could look at, but off the top of my head, not knowing the specifics of everything, every revenue, the answer is yes, if you can get the voters to go for it.
Thank you, sir.
Yes. Thank you, councilman.
Is there a move, a motion that we adopt this?
Been moved by Councilman Shaw.
I second that motion, mayor.
Seconded by? One end or the other? We'll give this to Councilman Locke, seconded by Councilman Locke that we adopt this resolution. Discussion, all in favor? All opposed? The ayes have it, thank you so much, Josh. Steve, it's good to see you. It's always good to see you, if the council would agree to extend the agenda, I would call you up and ask you how's it going in your city? And we talk about workforce development and the tremendous job that you're doing. And we'd like to, of course, you know, you and I are on the same page on that kind of thing. But thank you so much for driving the Bastrop, and one day we may have you up here to talk about wonderful things you're doing with workforce development and, you know, all the things you're doing with work keys and all the other wonderful things. I'll tell you what, I would entertain a motion from any council members that want to expand the agenda to get you up here. Take care, Steve, take care, Steve. It's great to see you every time. And good luck on your reelection.
Thanks, so that's three weeks from now.
Okay.
If, uh, without extending the agenda.
Yes, sir. Okay. We are down to item ten, is that correct?
That's correct.
Item ten, resolution eighteen dash eighteen zero three, a resolution authorizing the city of Bastrop through its mayor to make application for the fiscal year twenty nineteen Louisiana Community Development Block Program for a grant in order to make improvements to the city sewer system collections and rental target area. Mr. Waxman. Welcome to Bastrop, Robbie.
Thank you, good to be here. This is our normal application process that we do for community development block grants. And it's a competitive process. This is HUD money that's provided by the feds to the state. And the big cities like Monroe and New Orleans and Baton Rouge, people with population over fifty thousand, they get their community development block grant directly to them. The rest of us, smaller cities, police juries and all the rest, we have to compete. So, every two years they take applications. And the majority of the money is allocated for sewer and water in some streets, but mostly it's water and sewer these days. Anyway, the first round that they look at is the problem itself. And there were about a hundred and five applications and the severity package that we put in, we ranked, I think, number twenty-seven out of a hundred and five, that means we were towards the top. And so, we're invited to put in a full application and that's what we're fixing to do. I won't bore you with all the details, but we are working on your existing sewer collection problems that have been identified and EPA has put you under administrative order. And that's what this money is, is to address those issues in your collection system. So, we need this resolution passed tonight, so the application will be officially filed, I think, the twenty-sixth or the twenty-seventh of October. And I'll be glad to answer any questions. Anybody have?
Can you, this is an opportunity to alert the public of the survey that has to be done, Robbie?
We, part of the application process is we identify the beneficiaries of the project. One of the federal requirements is that fifty-one percent of all the people that benefit from these projects are low to moderate income. It's not black or white, it's an income level, okay? And we can use census data in some spots, but some spots, and I won't go into great detail, but the census, you can't pull out some smaller things. So, we use a door-to-door survey instrument. And the mayor and I and Ms. Lenore met with our surveyors earlier in the week and we went through what we need to survey. So, we're actually gonna have some people calling and knocking on doors and asking questions. So, if you hear some of your constituents say that somebody knocked on my door, it's a beneficial thing. Because if we're successful, we'll actually save the city a good deal of money. But there are some statistical things we need to get, we can't get them off the census information, thus, we do the door-to-door. So, if you hear that and with your constituents, that's what it's for, it's a positive thing, yes.
And one question on the survey has to do with the range of income.
Yeah, there is a question there, we're trying to determine that term, low to moderate income. So, one of the things on the survey is we asked them as a family, because that's what HUD requires, did they make, it's, we don't ask their exact income. We just ask them in the last year as a family, did you make more or less than that? So, it's a range. And we're not required to look at any social security checks or Medicaid or Medicare or anything like that, it's a true door-to-door survey. So, we take them as their word, but we do ask that income question. So, if one of your constituents asks you, it's private information, we're using the nine-one-one numbers and it goes into a big data bank and nobody sees it again, but we determine the percentage of low to moderate income for our project. So, that's the purpose of the door-to-door survey.
And it's a ton of work to go to.
Yes, it's a lot of work.
To, because cell phone numbers aren't generally readily available. And we're having people, two people that Ms. Lenore selected, and I would like to give their names, is that alright with you, Ms. Lenore? So, the public will know. Julius Phillips and Vicky Carter, they are in a team, we have a male and a female together. We didn't want to put a female out there alone and we didn't want a man alone because we want people to be comfortable to come to the door and answer the phone. And they will be canvassing by phone and door-to-door and they've got to identify every single house, every single dwelling apartments, they've got to divide up how many apartments in each complex and divide them up and count people and count, get the income statistics. So, it's a two-week job, it's just two weeks.
Only two people doing it?
It's only two people. Unless the council wanted to allocate more funding.
I mean, what is the funding already allocated?
It's a few hundred dollars, it's less than sixteen hundred dollars, I believe, for the whole survey.
We usually don't recommend.
No, for the two, it's under two thousand dollars.
We usually don't recommend too many people, I don't make that final determination, but sometimes when you have too many, it's kind of difficult to keep up. So, two good folks can do it, but it's a lot of work. We've already met once and I'm coming back next Monday to meet again, we meet several times. So, it becomes an important part of the application process.
So, we should encourage our constituents to open the door.
To respond, please. Yes, that would be, that would be very, that would be very helpful.
And it's not the entire city, it's the people.
It's parts of the community, even parts that may be outside the city because we have to isolate the census information. So, in some places we're adding, in some places we're subtracting our data. So, it's the only way we could do it. And that, even though it's a big survey, using the census data makes it smaller than it would be if we had to do the whole thing. So, anyway, you might hear some feedback, but that's what it's for. And, you know, it actually is as successful, we'll keep, it's possible that we'll actually keep the sewer rates in the long run maybe a little lower because we'll use this money to fix the problems.
And we are mandated to do this.
Yes, you're under administrative order by EPA, so you have to, you're gonna fix your problem one way or the other. Hopefully, we can fix it with a lot of grant money, so you don't spend all your money doing that and you can fix something else.
Yes, and the total project cost is over?
Yeah, it's almost a million dollars with all the money in it. And the state will put up about six hundred and twenty thousand of that dollars. And just so you know, there are two, there are two people, my, two firms, Waxman's three, who I represent, I'm the grant administrator. I don't get paid anything unless the grant gets funded. The engineer, which in this case is Denman Engineering, they're the same thing, we do all this work, we put it in, if it doesn't get funded, we get zero. So, we're obviously interested in getting funded. And if we do get funded, we get paid over the life of the grant, so we don't just walk away, you're paying us for our services.
Robbie, the amount that we would get, the benefit of, if we don't do the survey, what happens?
Well, if we don't do the survey, we won't get that, we won't get the grant money.
And there's several hundred thousand dollars at stake here?
Oh, yes, there's over six hundred thousand dollars at stake.
Yeah, so we could either.
It becomes very important.
Ms. Goldman, the city's part of that will come out of different funds, right? Not against the general fund?
It will not come out of the general fund, it'll come out of the sewer use money.
We do have the money.
Yes, we do. And this, just so you know, say the bid is a million, we spend the state's money first.
That's correct.
And if it's less, then we don't pay as much as we thought we would.
We get a good bid, Sandra's exactly right, but you don't ever know about your bids, obviously, but we do spend, she's exactly right, we spend the state money first, we spend your money last. And if the bid comes under the cost estimate as projected in the project, we don't spend all your money, we spend all their money.
And Ms. Lenore is monitoring almost hourly the survey and how's it going, Ms. Lenore?
It's going great.
Going great?
We did two sections already and then we're starting on a third one in the morning.
Okay, and there are seven sections probably? Target areas?
Target area, one target area, it is seven sections.
Yeah.
Some have only one, which makes it easy.
Yeah.
So, there are two areas that's really gonna be big and they'll have about the seven subsections under those.
And they're having to draw every structure of every house and tell where it is, the street, and it's like doing a census. And I think it's a great deal that we're getting, that we're getting.
But they have some side help when it comes to drawing and putting the data together.
And that's you? That's you, the side help?
Yes.
You're not getting paid any extra, are you?
I'm not getting paid any, yes.
We don't have no money, we don't have no money, as long as you're not getting extra.
Robert?
I make a motion that we adopt this resolution, we got to do it, y'all, it's just.
Can you say that a little louder, Robert?
We got to do it.
Okay, great, yes. So, it's moved by Councilman Shaw, who's second?
Mr. Locke.
Mr. Locke.
Mr. Locke's second, well, I gave him the last one. He was second, I thought it was a tie. Okay, seconded by Councilman Howard Locke, District E. And any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, Mr. Waxman.
Sandra, would you email me, please?
I will, and mayor, you the regional.
Yep, you got it, okay. Thank you all so much, mayor, I'll be back Monday for our meeting and you'll call me if you need me.
Is it three thirty?
Three thirty, that's what, yeah.
Okay, three thirty.
Same time, same place.
We'll be there.
Y'all call me if you need me, you got my phone, thank y'all.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
If it fails, it's Ms. Lenore's fault, Robbie? If it succeeds? No, she's doing a great job, she's on top of it. Thank you, gentlemen. Discussion, action, Morehouse, oh, that motion, I'm sorry, that resolution is adopted, eighteen, eighteen oh three, thank you. Discussion, action, Morehouse Humane Society, State Compliance, Mr. Tom Thro, are you here? Oh, would you come up, please, sir? When we were giving out awards while Mr. Thro was walking up, I worked for Mr. Thro, under his guidance, he was principal, and I was teaching math and for several years there. And Mr. Thro, when we were awarding, I thought about Tom, he was the best at recognizing students. And he had trophies and all kinds of fancy things and by the hundreds and he made sure everyone was appreciated. And so, thank you, thank you, Tom, for the lessons that you gave me in recognition, recognizing individuals who do a good job.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, okay, let's talk about this, the Morehouse Humane Society and State Compliance, can you bring us up to date? Do you have a PowerPoint?
A little PowerPoint, it's short.
Yes, sir, can you zoom in that, Ms.? Okay.
Who can, who's gonna advance it?
Oh, my goodness. Okay, great.
I don't want to do it automatically. Well, first of all, I want to thank you, mayor, and all the city council members for allowing me to speak with you tonight. Met with the mayor and I have to say this, the mayor has been supportive of what we try to do at the Humane Society as Mr. DeValle and Mr. Gray have too. And I realize and I know, just as all of you do, that the economics in our area aren't real booming at the time and it's a difficult thing. But I want to go over, it's not gonna be long, but I want to be thorough. And I just want to really kind of educate the council members about what we deal with and our condition. And of course, we just had a, recently had a state inspection and I'll share that with you too. But I just want to let you know that if you look there, Morehouse Humane Society was chartered in nineteen eighty-four and I'm not gonna read that, you can read up there, I don't like people to hand out something and read it to you. But there are some things that I want to point out, one is that we deal with the animals at the Humane Society. How many of y'all have been out there, has anybody ever been out there? Robert, okay. It's sixty-eight seventy-eight Marouge Highway, it's outside the city limits, but it's on city property, okay? The city owns the shelter, all the buildings there and the grounds and everything else. But we deal with the animals brought in by the animal control officer that we usually call the dog catcher, right? That's who we deal with, ninety-nine point nine percent of those animals out there are brought in by Mr. Thaxson. We will take, matter of fact, we had a dog shot today on, somewhere on Cooper Lake Road, outside the city limits and he was brought to the shelter, we took him to the vet, you know, because we're not just gonna let the dog suffer. But that's rare occasions that we take animals outside the city limits, ninety-nine point nine percent of our animals brought in by the animal control officer. And this is our goal here, to find owners of suitable homes, take care of them, and I know that's a little, I made it a little. And, uh, I know that's a little, I, I, I made it a little small, 'cause I didn't wanna put too many slides up. But, uh, I will read that for you. Purpose to aid the relief, in the relief and suffering and rehabilitation of abused and abandoned animals which are brought into the Bastrop City Shelter by the city animal control officer. Help stop overpopulation. We do try to do that by spay and neuter animals. And, uh, find suitable homes for those without owners, prevent cruelty, to provide humane euthanasia when deemed at a last resort in an animal suffering in a hopeless situation, and to promote educational teaching, responsible pet ownership. That's one area that we've got to get better in as the Humane Society too. Why, uh, why then, this was done, this, we were chartered in eighty-four. Yeah, does anybody know what would, what was done with the animals that were, that the city animal control officer got prior to this? When we established the shelter out there? Actually, they were brought out there and after five days, bam, shot. And that's bad. We have laws now that, current laws, you can't do that. You, you have to, if a dog is sick or a dog is beyond help, then there's a process that a vet has to okay to be euthanized, to be put down. So, uh, it's a lot different. Uh, most of the laws that are on the books happened after nineteen eighty-five. And there's a lot of laws governing the operation of shelters. Our shelter hadn't been, uh, you could go to the next, our shelter hasn't been, uh, inspected for years. But it was recently, and I, I think they've kinda, were really lax in that, and they kinda kicked it back up a notch in new administration. We come out of the Department of Agriculture, and they do the inspections. And, uh, a lot of, lot of folks, uh, because of the lax in time, that they hadn't done them in so many years, are not up to snuff. And, and it, it's a good thing that, I'm glad that we got that inspection because it tells us what we need to do to do a better job taking care of the city's animals. Uh, population of the shelter, I wanna, if you look at this in June of two thousand and seventeen, the American Association, uh, Society Prevention of Cruelty Animals picked up a hundred and thirty-four dogs here in Bastrop and took them to Canada, okay? We left, we're left with five dogs. Happened previously in two thousand and seven after Katrina. It actually started in two thousand and six and extended. And, uh, ten years later, in seventeen they did, I don't know if they'll do it another ten years. But, you know, up, up north, there's not a lot of dogs like they are down here. You know, you have a dog at every corner down here, and cats, they say, are damn a dozen. But up there, because of the weather and the cold, you know, most of the dogs are, you know, person doesn't have but one, maybe two. And they're re, that'd be registered, if they're not, it was a big, heavy fine, usually five hundred dollars, uh, for fines. So, but, but there're just not that many dogs. So people actually just kinda take better care of them because they all live basically inside. But if you look now, on December the thirty-first of this year, of last year, we had sixty-eight adult dogs, thirteen puppies, and thirteen, uh, thirteen cats and kittens. That wasn't a whole lot. And we have forty-three pens out there. That's, that's including the two holding pens that we try to keep open for the dog catcher. Forty-three pens. From January one to this past end of the last month, the dog catcher brought in three hundred and eighty-seven dogs and cats. Three hundred and eighty-seven in nine months. That's a lot of animals. And they all came from the city limits. Like, I think ninety-nine point nine percent of them. Now, two hundred, uh, animal shelter and two hundred and thirty-five lab outcomes. That means that where they're adopted, uh, they were sent to rescue. Mindy Differ, Difer, uh, was responsible for a hundred and forty-two of those animals, mostly puppies, 'cause puppies usually don't have heart worms, and they don't have a lot of other problems 'cause they're young. And she was able to place or get adopted, and we adopted some of them too, a hundred and forty-two. But, uh, we have a hundred and fifty-two, that was at the end of the month. This, right now, we have more, about, about a hundred and sixty now. We're the only humane society that we know, and I've just got back from a state meeting down in Amity, and they had a bunch of shelter people there from New Orleans to Shreveport to wherever. We're the only humane society that we know that takes animals brought in from a city or parish animal control officer. The city and parish are charged with providing an animal shelter for that purpose. Humane Society, like in Monroe, they don't take animals from the animal control officer. They'll, they'll take animals they want, if they don't want an animal, they don't take it. And if they get to where there's an older animal and there's a cute little one comes in, guess what? They're gonna put that dog down, okay? Euthanize that dog. So they control their numbers. We don't, we're not a kill shelter. The only time we put an animal down, if it's vicious, if it's, uh, if it just is so aggressive that... If we have three to four dogs in one pen, you can imagine, if there's an aggressive dog in there that injures those two or three other dogs, then we've gotta take those to the vet, and here goes our vet bill, okay? So, uh, we're in a unique position. In nineteen eighty-four, this was a great idea because nobody was taking care of them. After five days, they were put down, and a lot of people love animals and care about them. And, uh, so this was organized, but, uh, we, we are, we're in a unique situation. Our general expenses are, are, and I'm gonna cover those quickly, meds for animals entering the shelter. We have to give every puppy three shots, every adult dog a shot, every kitten three shots, every adult cat a shot, okay? We have to dip every dog brought in, if it's appropriate age, you know, like two or three months old. Uh, and we have to worm all the animals. We buy all the meds to do that. Vet bills for office visits and, and the meds that the vet prescribes. From July, started our fiscal year, July, August, and September, our vet bill ran over two thousand dollars a month, averaged. So it's, it's a lot. Spay and neuter fees, we try to shop around, we have two vets that'll do it for fifty dollars plus a rabies shot. We have one that'll do it for eighty-five, and up here, you know, Glenn Melton doesn't own this veterinarian hospital anymore. It's a corporate owns that, and they charge by the weight of the animal, anywhere from a hundred and twenty up to two hundred dollars, okay? So we are very particular, if we can get it into a low cost when we do that. We buy food for cats, kittens, dogs, and puppies. We buy about a pallet of dog food every nine days, that's twenty-one bags. It costs about four hundred and ten dollars. So our food bill alone's gonna run sixteen thousand plus a year, just for dog food, doesn't count for the cat food. We have to buy cleaning supplies 'cause we have to clean the runs every day. We sterilize three, four times a week. And, uh, you see plastic glove, our employees' gloves, our employees have to wear them, trash bags, sanitizer, liquid washing detergent, 'cause we have bedding for animals that we have to wash and dry and do all that. Uh, we have gas, we have a vehicle donated by Carl and Mary H, Mary Helen Turpin, the late Carl Turpin Senior. And, uh, he, uh, they donated that vehicle in two thousand and ten, it's a nineteen ninety-nine Ford Explorer, and it still runs. But we have to provide insurance and gas for it, we have to buy that gas. We have two employees, they're both part-time, one works twenty hours and one works about sixteen. And various times, one may have to work a little bit over, and we may end up spending a little bit more than forty hours per week for our employees. And that's basically, generally speaking, what, what our costs are. Expenses for the city, the shelters on the city, a property and belongs to the, uh, the shelters on city, property of the city and belongs to the city. This is what Mayor, if you're looking at this, or Mr. Gray, if y'all think of something that I hadn't put down here, city pays the utilities out there. They give us seventy man-hours per week, okay? One full-time employee that works five days a week, eight hours a day, and then thirty hours, uh, with another employee or group of employees. Eight bags of dog to, food per month, and we get an eleven thousand dollar donation per year, and they take care of our waste disposal.
Now, that eleven thousand dollar, that's city.
That's city.
Yeah.
That's what you...
We contribute.
The city donates, is that right, Ms. Goldman?
Eleven thousand dollars.
That's great.
Now, uh, the state inspection, like I said the last time, it was a long time ago. And they came, the first thing they said, do y'all know this is a public building, they must meet public building standards, just like she said, City Hall. I wanna commend the mayor, said he was the first mayor that ever intended, attended a state inspection. And I wanna thank you, Mayor, for being that.
Yes, sir.
She talks about, we were at that meeting in Amity, she was bragging on you, how you were there, and, and that, how unique that was. And, uh, and I thought that was great that, that, that you represented the city that well. Uh, all supplies need to be off the floor, we've done that. Cleaning supplies need to be separated, we had them next to the food, we did that. Locks on small refrigerating closet door, we did all, we've done all that. Uh, the, uh, city provided the, the things that we could elevate the food, uh, and, and stuff like that, get them off the floor. Okay, the floor has tears, I had tears there. Uh, holes must be in, in, impermeable. That means that can't have scratches, it can't be porous where some, you've got to be able to sterilize them, and bacteria cannot get down in the, the fiber or whatever it may be. And ours are just like oleinolium, and they've got scratches and holes in them, and they came down us on that. Plexiglass around quarantine areas, and inside the female cat room and the male cat room, uh, we have a little quarantine area, and it has to be a plexiglass at least four feet tall there. So the cats can't touch each other through that, that area. Restroom is public and must be maintained as such, also the floor needs also to be impermeable. Uh, and we have cleaned that up, uh, uh, we hadn't changed the floor out, but we've done, we've cleaned it up and keep it like we were ready for somebody to walk in. Okay, uh, hole-in cat room, that's where any animal we get, if we get in a dog in or a puppy, and we have to hold them for fourteen days, same thing with cats, to see if they've got some kind of disease or, or whatever. And it's got to be, have the same thing, it's got to have that floor with some type of coating or, or some type of structure that bacteria can't get out, same thing with the walls, gotta be able to wash it down. Uh, puppy house, we have a puppy house where we quarantine the puppies and keep them, same thing with the walls there and the floor. Uh, we have some exposed wiring out there, uh, lights without covers, they're, they're old, uh, box lights. And, uh, general outside area, catch drains needs to be installed to allow water to exit the ditch, to the ditch. Wiring and conduit, conduit and remove extension cords, we have extension cords running across the lawn, okay? And you knew, you can imagine how unsafe that is. Uh, additional number of large fans that she asked for, uh, said that we needed some, we have a couple out there now. The needs of the city, the shelter, um, first thing we need is to address the mandates of state law so that the shelter can be in a hundred percent compliance requirements. And those are things I tell you, mainly, we've done everything we can except with the physical part of the facility. It's old. The last time a ru, a set of pens, I call them a run of pens, was built, was like two thousand, I'm gonna say two thousand and eight. Before that, it was nineteen eighty-seven. So you know it's an old structure, and things have changed. Uh, renovate current pens and add additional pens for dogs and puppies, uh, estimated about max six thousand dollars. That's with us paying to have them or installing them ourselves, that's just the equipment. We can have them installed if we can get those. But the first thing we have to do before we start getting new pens is fix what we've got. You know, all these things that the state said we needed to do. And it's not a whole lot, it's, it's, it's just the physical part of the facility. Additional finance, financial resource to pay for meds, heartworm treatment, flea and tick prevention, spay and, spay and neuter, cleaning supplies, those are things that we need. Human resources to address the needs of animals, enough to take care of them. And I, I think at some point, 'cause I could not find it anywhere, and I talked to Ms. Mary Helen earlier today, she's about ninety-two, but she still has a real good memory, believe it or not. And she said she didn't know, know of anything in writing that the city agreed to. I think it's all been a verbal, started with Mayor Bond, Mayor Hawkins, and, and kinda, that kinda passed down through that way. But, uh, we would like to have a memorandum of understanding, a contract, something to say, you know, what, what, to make, get a city commitment to do something, because remember, it's a city shelter and it's the city animals. And we're trying our best to manage it and, and be good stewards of the money. Uh, last year, our last fiscal year, our budget was fifty-six thousand dollars, that's what we spent. This year, with the larger increase of animals, remember, we started the year off, last year, last fiscal year, with five dogs. We have a hundred and, about a hundred and thirty now, okay? Thank you. And so, the more dogs, the more food, the more meds, the more everything. This year, we're projecting an estimate of about sixty-three thousand dollars that we will spend. Uh, adult dog food is gonna be sixteen thousand, uh, vet bill is running right now, two thousand, I hope that goes down. Supplies, ten thousand. Uh, and we do, we do have some, besides what the city gives us, we have some gaming, and we make a little bit off of that with the video bingo, of course, we have to pay a lot of salaries. Sometimes in a month, we mean, we may not even, uh, break even. But that just depends on, uh, how, how things go there. We do have membership drives, and that's been successful. We have casserole sales, we have a casserole sale Saturday at Christ Episcopal Church, and we have bake sales. And that's basically, we raised of that sixty-three thousand, all but eleven thousand from the city. We're gonna have to raise ourselves to take care of the city animals. And, and don't get me wrong, I'm not complaining, I know how tight it is, I see y'all sit up here, and, and I hear Mr. DeVal talk about, uh, you know, the rec and all that, and the, the recreation department, and, 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 and I know everybody from the school board, the city, the police department, everybody's hurting for money, and I know our area. But we've got to have some resources, especially to meet the mandates that are presented, presented to us by the state. They'll be back after the first of next year. And we hadn't scheduled that specific date, they wanted to give us time. We may not be able to do everything, but we need to show good faith that we're moving in that direction. Because of what we don't want them to do is shut it down. And I don't think we're near that, don't get me wrong. And I'm not up here to, to scare you and say that, 'cause, because there's a lot of shelters like we are in our shape. But most of them are financed by the city or parish. And so what I'm asking to do, if we can, some kinda way, get together and, and set some priorities and start attacking a few of the physical problems out there. We can get by with what we have in, in a lot of ways, we just need some additional support. Any questions I can answer?
Memorandum of Understanding, uh, Mr. Pierre, can you comment on that? We have, to my knowledge, no memorandum of understanding, and it is the city's shelter. And we do appreciate the, the, uh, uh, the, the, the monies that, uh, that's being raised, and the volunteerism, and the Morehouse Humane Society, who bears the bulk of, the bulk of the load here, and it is the city's shelter. Mr. Pierre, uh, can you talk a little bit about a memo, memorandum of understanding?
Pretty much it's a document, Mayor, uh, between the municipality, I'm not up... It's a document between the municipality and, uh, other agencies or groups, uh, just setting forth what is the general understanding between the parties, uh, uh, as was indicated a moment ago. Uh, the city has not made a, a budgetary commitment, I'm assuming, uh, by way of council action.
We budgeted eleven thousand.
Okay, fair enough, fair enough.
I'd like to ask Ms. Goldman, Ms. Goldman, are you aware of any MOU?
I'm not, I'm not aware of it.
Okay.
We did up our budget, it used to be six thousand, and this year we upped it to eleven.
We did increase it. And the six was woefully low, we realized, and the eleven is still low, but, um, that's about all we could...
Well, and let, let me interject something, excuse me, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
The reason we ask for more is on the, you know, it's very difficult to find any worker that wants to go out, that was willing to go out there and scoop dog poo, uh, clean litter boxes, do all of that. Uh, and then couple with the fact that on the weekends, we've gotta have somebody there all Saturday, all Sunday, doing that. And it's very difficult. We had one employee out there that the city was providing, and I felt it was not safe nor right for one person humanly possible to clean after forty-three dog pens and after fifty cats. Just can't do it. And if that person got injured or hurt, the liability factor, need two people there. So we, we, we hired that extra person from the Humane Society with the money.
Yeah, Mr. Throh, I, I, I feel ashamed that you're explaining, that you're even having to explain, uh, we were contributing only one-tenth of the monies that it took to run the shelter, and it's our shelter, no. But I feel ashamed that, that it's not on your part.
And not yours.
But it is on mine, because the city, it is the city's shelter, and we were contributing only, only ten percent of its operation. Uh, so you, you guys have proven that you... So you guys have proven that you're efficient and you take care of the business and it was every councilman here agreed with the increase and we just wish it was more. So I'm saying that, that we have a sense of responsibility. I know all of these gentlemen and I know that they feel the same sense of responsibility here. And, and we appreciate the Humane Society. And, and we know that your request for, for additional funds, well, we talked about it and we realized that you needed it. And every councilman, is that right, gentlemen?
Mayor, and I commend Mr. Thor, but the same token, I think what he was getting at is really not all responsibility, it's the animal owners who not taking, who's not taking responsibility, but we got to.
Well, that's, that's, that's the point, but so many dogs that don't have an owner, you know, you got a dog out there, stray dog, and it has eight puppies, that's nobody's dog. And it's the city's dog, so.
Sometimes though, Mayor.
Yeah.
And, and I'll just be, I'll just have to be honest with you, that they will not get a dog spayed or neutered, maybe because they can't afford it, but there are, there are pause applications where they'll, for low-income families that they'll, and we have those to give out, but what they'll do, and I, I know because my wife and I just took care of five kittens that did him have, we had to bottle feed them, we took them home and bottled fed them four hours, every four hours. But people, what will they do when they, they have a dog that'll have eight puppies, they'll keep a mama dog to pick up the litter and call Mr. Thaxen to come get them because they're strays and they don't even have their eyes open and they can't walk, so you know they're not strays. Now, that doesn't happen all the time, but it happens.
Sure. Yeah. And, well, we do appreciate your report and I'd like to, for the council to take that under advisement and we'll look for guidance from Mr. Pierre on it, on an MOU and the possibility of us developing one. Mr. Gray, can you come up real quick and we're going to go on, but, Mr. Thor?
I want to thank, thank you all too.
No, but stay, stay please, Mr. Thor, for a second. Mr. Thor, Tom, you came and we asked you to, you know, get a list of things that in a, that we needed to do.
Right.
Because when I was out there with you, with the, and Mr. Gray and Jesse, when the state was here inspecting and they told us what we had to do with the pins and all of this, we were going to do as much as we can. Mr. Gray, can you speak to that a little bit? We know we can't do everything at one time.
What I, I thought would be the best thing to do, we have to gradually do it all because it didn't get that bad since July 3rd, May 17th, it's been ongoing problem, like most things we were running into. So we realize we can't do, everything need to be done out there, but we can do a little bit at a time to show the state that we are trying to fix the problem that are out there. Bad wiring, no heat, just a lot of things that need to be done.
Okay. I just want to make the council aware that we're looking at, we'll probably have to buy some pin material, some, the fence, like, how tall does it have to be, Mr. Thor?
Well, we, we priced some and it's prefab, so, and we'll pay to get it put up if we can get it, but to put up, to replace five or six pins with eight pins, which we can separate the dogs at the best, you don't want to have three and four dogs in a pin if you can help it. So they'll create a few more, eight more in another site that's already got concrete in, and then construct a puppy pad, we already have the concrete down, that would run at the most $6,000. That, that's what it would be. But Mr. Gray is 100% right, we need the wiring done, we're going to have to do something with those floors too and the walls. I would think that would be number two on our list. But we do need those, if we can get the additional, renovate one pin and get an additional eight pins and do the puppy pad, that, I figured 5,500 to 6,000, this is what the quote from Feedenstein gave us.
Okay. Any questions, gentlemen?
No, I commend y'all, y'all do a good job. And, but what I'm wondering is, do we need to contract the electrical part of this or, or do we have talent on the current force, labor force to do it? Would we have to?
That's, that's a good question. The, 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 the extension cords are just hung and they're running up and as Mr. Thor indicated, if a dog jumps up and bites it, electrocutes and we got a problem, there's...
Some on the ground.
Some on the ground. And the state cited us, but they were very nice, but they, and they will work with us, right, Mr. Thor?
Right, right. They don't expect it to be fixed overnight, I think, as Mr. Gray said, didn't happen overnight, it's been years. And I'm not throwing the blame at anybody, but, but we've inherited it and we just, we need to show them that we're doing our best to do, to get towards some goal. And they don't expect it to be done overnight, just boom, nobody has the kind of resources that I know of.
So, Mr. Gray's going to be communicating with Ms. Goldman and monitoring as we go along and, and Ms. Goldman always lets us know what we can afford and can't afford. She does a great job of letting me know all the time what we can't afford. So, thank you, Ms. Goldman, for that. So, Mr. Thor, thank you so much, any?
But I, I think the first thing you wanted was some type of written thing between the city, you know.
No, actually, Mr. Locke, I, to be honest with you, you're, you're already in your budget year. I think, I think it, and, and look, I'm just trying to be honest and, and understanding what y'all are having to deal with too. I, I think what we do, whatever we can now to meet the mandates of the state, but try to work on a MOU for the next fiscal year. That would make more sense to, if I were in your shoes, you're kind of locked into what you've got now.
Yeah.
You know, so, and I understand that, dealing with budgets and everything like that, so, but if we can get to where we can fix some of these broken mandates that we have, that's the first thing, and then those additional pins if we can. And then we can, we can show we're making a concerted effort to make those improvements.
And they are mandates from a state agency that has the power to, to, to issue mandates. And we take it as a mandate and not just a suggestion. Thank you, Mr. Thor.
Thank you again.
We do appreciate your service and please, please like our Facebook page for the Humane Society.
Yes.
So click like and please encourage other people to adopt some of the animals. There's some gorgeous animals out there.
They are. And they're all looking for a forever home.
Yes, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item?
Twelve.
Well, Resolution 18-1804.
Ten o'clock, we've got to be out of here.
Ten o'clock, Mr. Prater, ten o'clock. A resolution of the mayor and board of all the persons of the city of Bastrop to authorize the mayor on behalf of the city to enter into an agreement for automatic response for the fire service between the city of Bastrop, Louisiana and the Bastrop Area Fire Protection Number Two, known as Fire District Number Two, for certain areas in Morehouse Parish. Chief Crowder.
Yeah. Basically, Mayor, we're not really asking anything tonight, just to let y'all know that.
Thank you, sir.
This, this is something that we, something that we already have, it's just an understanding between us and District Two Fire Protection Agency. And it keeps our city separate from their department to keep the ratings safe, I mean, stable. They, they have a little bit higher rating than we do, we don't want to combine them because that would make hours come up. So this is basically what we already have.
Yes.
We basically asking y'all to.
And a lower rating is better for, for City of Bastrop because it saves us, our homeowners and property owners and businesses' insurance money.
Exactly.
Okay.
I move that Resolution 18-1804.
Okay.
Seconded motion, Mayor.
It's been moved by Councilman Locke, seconded by Mayor Pro Tim, Councilman Moore, that we adopt this resolution. Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, Chief Crowder.
Okay.
And give our regards to Fire District Number Two.
Most definitely.
Chief and everyone. What else do you have? You have something else?
Move to the next.
The next item.
Thirteen, oh, you staying up here?
Yeah, I'm, I'm ready to roll.
Double, double hitter.
I'm ready to roll.
Okay. Resolution 18-1805, a resolution of the mayor and board of all the persons of the city of Bastrop, Louisiana to authorize the mayor on behalf of the city to enter into a mutual aid agreement for the fire protection between the city of Bastrop, Louisiana and Marouge Volunteer Fire Department, Ward Two, Beekman, Volunteer Fire Department, Ward Eight, Fire Protection District Number One, and Ward Ten, which is Bonita, Volunteer Fire Department. Chief Crowder.
Once again, I say we're not asking for anything new. Basically, what we're doing in this one is just, we're just setting up an agreement with all the other stations and, and our towns in the parish, that we'll provide mutual aid to them. And this is, we, we need to adopt this, so we'll have it in writing for also the rating system as well. We'll have this contract listed. So it's not asking, we already do it, it's just putting it in writing.
Yes.
Mayor, I move that we adopt Resolution 18-1805.
Been moved by Councilman Locke.
Seconded motion, Mayor.
Seconded by Mayor Pro Tim, Councilman Moore. Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The resolution is adopted. Thank you, Chief.
Thank y'all, appreciate you.
You know, six of you can move along.
Mayor, just so y'all know the difference between that.
Yes, ma'am.
Fire District Two, we have a contract with them that we man those stations four and five.
Exactly.
That, the reason why they're different, if they have a fire in their district, we automatically go to it.
It's automatic aim.
These other ones, we wait on them to call for it systems. We'll back them up, but they have to call for it. So that's the difference between the two.
Yes. Yeah, our marriage to Fire District Number Two is really strong, isn't it?
That's right.
And it's a good marriage.
It is.
Yes. Okay. Item fourteen?
I was on fifteen.
We're on fourteen.
Fourteen. Resolution 18-1806, a resolution authorizing the mayor to make application, execute agreement through capital outlay for funding through the capital outlay fiscal year 2019, 2020 for replacing the roof on City Hall. Ms. Goldman?
Mayor, it's time for us to fill out an application, the deadline is November 1st. We would like y'all to consider this, we'll write our representative, the mayor will and ask them to support this. We really need a roof on this city hall. We've gotten it several years, but when they come back and they cut the budget, we get it. But we're not going to get it if we don't apply. So maybe along with the call and the letter, maybe y'all could call our representative and tell them, look, we really need the money, now's the time to make those calls, some of them's running, you know, might be a good idea.
Yeah, it is, it is a state.
It's a state.
And our representatives are Representative Katrina Jackson, we have Walsworth, Mike Walsworth.
Bubba Chaney.
Bubba Chaney, Francis Thompson.
And there's another one.
And Jay.
Jay Morris.
Jay Morris, yes, each one?
Yeah.
Yeah, robo calls? Okay.
Mayor, I make a motion that we give you authority to.
Been moved by Councilman Shaw.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Locke. Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Sixteen adjourned.
Resolution, Resolution 18-1806.
Seven.
Seven there.
Is adopted. Now, if we can say seven is adopted also, do you want to do that?
Go ahead.
Before we handle it? Okay. Resolution 18-1807, a resolution of the mayor, and I was only kidding there, Mr. Prater, about 07. A resolution of the mayor and board of all the, aldermen of the city of Bastrop, Louisiana to authorize the mayor to sign an act of donation for property located at 794 Carius Lane, Bastrop, Louisiana. Mr. Messenger, do you mind coming up to the microphone? Am I putting you on the spot there, Jeff? Of course, months ago, we were, you agreed to, to lease this building for, I think, a dollar? Ms. Goldman, let's make sure we paid them their dollar, please.
I'll check it out.
Would you check? Okay. I don't want them to come back in poor clothes or cancel anything because they didn't get their one dollar. You have a dollar?
Yeah.
Okay. But they were kind enough, let me say Total One is a corporation that, that we've had a, a great relationship with over this past year since they bought the International Paper properties, all of the properties, which included the Learning Center. Just this past week, we were in a meeting with Senator Mike Walsworth, Energy Representative, Ms. Tanner Trichelle and, and others to certify the International Paper site. If you certify a site, Ms. Liz Pierre understands all of that, the North Louisiana Economic Partnership and Mr. Trichelle's group is helping us on this one. Kay King, Ms. Kay King, who's always there for us, giving us guidance in the economic development. She has a wealth of knowledge, she was there this week. And Total One representatives, Mr. Messenger and another principal of the corporation was, was in attendance in my office in the conference room. And they've been a joy to work with, we're going to get that site certified. And LED is so excited about that site because it has rail service and wells and it's, it's close to ready. So we're going to certify that site, it's going to be advertised all over the world. And we expect some good things to happen. But aside from that, they picked up quite a few other properties in town and one is the Training Center that appraised for almost a million dollars, that they were willing to, they, I was thinking about myself begging, you know, that kind of thing. But, but they were kind enough to, to donate that to the city, they had to hold it for a year in order to get the benefits of donation. And Mr. Messenger, he is a representative of that group tonight. And so I'm going to read the resolution, Resolution of the mayor and board of all the men of the city of Bastrop to authorize the mayor to sign an act of donation for the property at 794 Carius Lane, City of Bastrop, Louisiana. We've done a, a, a site, Ms., Ms. Barfield, can you tell what we accomplished there with the site?
Well, we haven't received the assessment back yet, but I did go over with TCM on their last signing to take pictures of all the indoor rooms and outdoor rooms of all the rooms that they built.
Okay. And it's my understanding that we'll have that complete, correct?
Correct.
Yes. We'll have the environmental assessment completed before we take, is that right, Ms. Lenore?
Yes.
Yes, yes, we'll have that done before we take possession of the building. So the building will be clean. It's quite a donation, it's, involves a city block, we have space to do weddings and all types of events and if we get an economic development partner who wants to come in and need office space, we can quickly convert and give them space to operate, there's all kind of flexibility we can have. And Robert, you were executive at IP for quite a, quite a few years, you was the Mills representative to the SOS Committee and others and, and you know the quality of that building, IP didn't, didn't spare any expense in building that.
We, it's a good building.
Great building.
Very, very useful.
Yes, sir. Gentlemen? Have any questions? Okay, motion's been made by Mayor Pro Tim Moore.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Locke. Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The House has it, the resolution is adopted. Thank you so much and give our regards to the other members of your organization.
All right.
And tell them how much we appreciate them. Thank you for your willingness to come. Item sixteen, what is that one?
I made the motion, Mayor.
It's motions made by Councilman Green, seconded by Councilman Prater, that we adjourn. Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.